What I can do now is just give you a recitation of the rules. And then it will be my privilege to introduce Congressman Stephen Lynch, who has come to join us, to address you, to fill us in on what's going on in the great wide world. So let's start with the rules. For those of you who aren't familiar with town meeting, this would be a very good point at which to pay attention. By the way, those of you who are coming in now, there are plenty of seats up here in the front, so help yourselves. I've been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the warrant posted on April 17th, 2019. It's been moved, seconded, discussed. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I have nominated Peter Toppin as assistant moderator for this meeting, and would entertain a motion to appoint him. It's moved, seconded, discussed. There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Madam Clerk, would you introduce the tellers, the deputy moderator, and administrator, administrate the oath? Thank you.
Would the following tellers please rise? Thank you. Susan Frankel, Chris Maraki, Deborah Downey, Peter Toppin, deputy moderator, Tom Gavin, Ann White, Penny Scott Pipes, Ellen Kelly, Rich Harding, and Linda Plowman. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will uphold the position to which you have been appointed this evening? Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's hard work, and I appreciate your willingness to do it. I'd like to recognize, at this point, dignitaries. Or we have a dignitary here. We have Representative Patrick Kearney. Could you just raise your hand, Patrick? Oh, there you are. Thank you very much. And at this point, I'd like to ask Congressman Stephen Lynch to come forward so that he may address the meeting.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Richard. Normally, I'm in Washington on Monday nights, and I do understand that there's a very important matter on the warrant, so I will be brief. But thank you for this courtesy that you've allowed me. Representative Kearney, good to see you. Just a brief update on what's been going on in Washington, D.C. As you may know, for the past several weeks, Congress has been preoccupied with the aftermath of the special counsel's report on interference in the 2016 presidential election. It is important to remember that for the past 22 months, Congress has been asked to stand down and refrain from any direct oversight of the suspected interference by the Russians in our 2016 election so that the investigation by Special Counsel Bob Mueller could proceed. And so we restrained from any oversight during that interregnum. Now, however, as that investigation has concluded, and as a co-equal branch of government, Congress is charged with the duty to provide oversight. And I happen to be a subcommittee chairman on that oversight committee. Congress has to do its job. And right now, my committee has issued numerous outstanding subpoenas to the White House and personnel in the executive branch. The White House has refused to comply. And while it is not a constitutional crisis yet, we are getting close. So we are waiting, actually, right now for the United States District Court's response to our request for information and for testimony. But the bottom line is this, and I always restrain, try to refrain from any political statements at town meetings. But the bottom line is this, that I took an oath, I took an oath when I took this job to represent you, to do my job, and to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And that is exactly what I intend to do as your representative. Now meanwhile, Congress has a lot of other functions and duties that it has to pay attention to, and things we have to focus on. When the Democrats took control of the House, I was asked to take a position on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And actually, there's been some progress there. As you may remember, Mike Capuano was sort of our person on transportation and infrastructure. But our district, including the town of Situate, has some major transportation and infrastructure issues, some challenges here in Situate. You know, for instance, one of the challenges we have as communities that are not that far from Logan Airport, we've got major problems with aviation. And with noise, with emissions, fuel emissions. And now that we've seen the problem with the 737 MAX, that each of those aircraft crashed in relative close proximity to the airports that they departed from, it presents a clear and present danger to the public when those planes don't operate properly. So I was, I had the opportunity, and I took it, to take the position on the Aviation Subcommittee. It gives me a little bit of leverage in dealing with the FAA. I took a position on the Railroads and Pipelines and Hatters material Subcommittee because we're having problems in our area, not necessarily in Situate, but certainly in Waymouth and some of the other towns where they're replacing some of the low-pressure gas lines with high-pressure natural gas. The old lines were 5 PSI, so 5 pounds per square inch. The new lines that come into town and come into the neighborhoods in the city of Boston as well are 50 PSI. Some of them are 200 PSI. So we have incidents like we did up in Merrimack Valley, Andover, and Lawrence, where we had dozens of homes destroyed and one fatality. So that, being on that committee, will give me the opportunity to, I think, to hold the gas companies accountable. And also, I was appointed to the Water Resources and Environment Subcommittee, which will help in this transportation bill with funding that we need in Situate for seawalls and other climate change mitigation and resiliency needs that we have here in Situate. There are a number of bills that we've been able to pass in Congress. One of them that I have filed, it actually deals with pipeline safety, would require the Secretary of Executive Office of Public Safety and Security of Massachusetts and the State Fire Marshal to sign off on some of these gas lines that are actually high-pressure lines coming into smaller towns and thickly settled residential areas. We do have a tentative agreement between the White House and Congress on a bipartisan transportation bill. They've agreed to spend, and this is tentative, but they've agreed to spend about $2 trillion over the next 10 years on basic infrastructure. I have the pleasure and honor of representing the entire Massachusetts delegation on that committee, so I'm not just watching out for my district, but also for the rest of the state as well. Again, when the Democrats took control of the House four months ago, I was also made the chairman of the Subcommittee on National Security. And that deals with cybersecurity vulnerabilities, the vulnerabilities of our own election systems. We're going to have a hearing fairly shortly on the resiliency of our election processes. We know now from a classified briefing that there were problems in the 2018 midterms, so we're not talking about the presidential election. We're talking about the most recent congressional elections. There were efforts to interfere in that. And we know that all across Europe, the same individual countries, Korea, China, Russia, have been hacking and undermining the electoral processes in all those democratic nations that will be going to the polls on May 23rd to the 26th to elect the legislature of the European Union. So there's every reason for us to be concerned about 2020 and what's going to happen then. We have this example of not only our own country in the past, but also other democracies that are facing hacking and interference efforts. The National Security Subcommittee that I chair also deals with our sons and daughters in uniform. Currently, we have about 14,000 troops in Afghanistan. We've got about 5,000 troops in Iraq. I will be there again very soon. Several thousand troops in Africa. We've got about 1,000 Marines newly deployed to Darwin, Australia in response to the activities going on in the South China Sea. Our committee also ensures that our veterans get the proper care and treatment that they have earned. Last week, I held a hearing on the veteran and active-duty military suicide issue and what we can do to help stop this tragic trend from continuing. While the news hasn't covered it, there are a number of issues that we have been able to pass in the House. And I'll just give you a few. One is HR-1, the For the People Act, which would actually give funding to local secretaries of state, like our Secretary of State Bill Galvin, to make our election systems more resilient to outside tampering and interference. We passed HR-8 and HR-11112. These are bipartisan, very basic background checks and enhanced background checks. Both are common sense gun violence measures. We also passed the HR-7 Paycheck Fairness Act to ensure that women receive equal pay for equal work. We passed HR-1585, the Violence Against Women's Reauthorization Act. We passed HR-1644, the Net Neutrality Act, also known as the Save the Internet Act, to restore vital net neutrality protections. And last week, we passed the Climate Action Now Act, which restores the United States back to the Paris Climate Accord Agreement. And the terms of that agreement are dictated by the United States. It's not dictated by a foreign nation or any other foreign power. Those terms are decided by our own government. And lastly, the Protecting Americans with Preexisting Conditions Act, which stops insurers from underwriting protections for preexisting coverage. In closing, I know that Situate has a proud tradition of patriotic service to our nation, and it is one of my favorite responsibilities as a member of Congress to nominate young men and women from my district to serve in our military academies. And I want to recognize a couple of Situate students. Johann Johnson, United States Air Force Academy, class of 2020. His parents are Carol Clayson and Tristan Johnson. They're down on Hathley Road. He's a graduate of Situate High School. Tom McGowan, United States Naval Academy, class of 2020. His parents are Christine and Brian McGowan, Briarwood Lane. He's a graduate of Boston College High School. And in fairness, we also on occasion have some of our young people who serve in the Peace Corps. I had no idea until a few years ago when I had a chance to meet with some of our young people serving in the Peace Corps in some remote areas of Africa. And they also serve in other challenging areas. And it is, without question, courageous service. So I made a rule that whenever I received information that someone in my district was serving in the Peace Corps, I would acknowledge them. So tonight, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Jonathan Ritchie. His parents are Jonathan and Maria. He's also Situate High School, class of 2015. He's now at the University of Greenwich. He recently left to deploy to Ecuador, a place certainly which has serious challenges. And he will be there until March of 2021. Lastly, this is Moderator Richard Bowen's final town meeting. Richard has decided not to run for reelection after serving as our town moderator since 2004. I know personally that Richard has served with integrity and great patience. Some of that patience he's exerting on me right now. And with no small amount of diplomacy, I was sitting on the bleachers for the last town meeting when we were deciding whether people could walk the dogs on the beach. And I saw diplomacy in action that night. But I do have a small gift for Richard. These are congressional cufflinks. And they're favorites of mine, and I just want you to have them. A token of my affection and thanks on behalf of the United States Congress. Thank you. And finally, thank you for being involved in town meeting. This is great to see. I know you've got one item on the warrant. It's a doozy, but it warms my heart to see town meeting full. I wish every town in my district, a lot of them have gone to town council, and so we don't have town meeting anymore. But I wish every town in my district had town meeting like Situate. I really do. It really makes people involved. This is really the essence of democracy. This is the essence of democracy. Situate is a shining example of what's best about America. You care about your seniors. You care deeply about your veterans. And the way you treat your sons and daughters, their schools and their activities, and the focus on the next generation is unparalleled. So it's an honor for me. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to represent you in the United States Congress. May God bless the town of Situate, and may God continue to bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Congressman. I'd like to ask Mr. Gerald Kelly to introduce the members of the Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On behalf of my fellow members of the Advisory Committee, I want to tell you what a great honor it has been to work with you. From the Advisory Committee tonight, starting to my left are Jamie Gilmore, Elise Russo, Patrice Metro, Michael Westcott, and Anthony Antonellis. And two other members who are unable to join us tonight, Lincoln Heineman, our chairman, and Sean DeLacy. And most importantly, our Recording Secretary, Leigh Anne Cataldo.
I'd like to ask Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, John Danahue, to introduce the board members, the town administrator, town accountant, and town council.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To my immediate right, we have your Finance Director, Nancy Holt. The gentleman standing up talking to Representative Kearney is your Town Administrator, James Boudreau. The Board of Selectmen, I have Vice Chairman, Maura Curran, Selectman Sean Harris, Selectman Tony Vignani, Selectman Karen Canfield, and your Town Council, Cindy Amara. Thank you.
And would Chairman of the School Committee, Richard Hebert, introduce the board members and the superintendent, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing Superintendent Ron Griffin. And the committee members here tonight, we have Peter Gates, Janice Lindblom, and our two missing members, Mike Hayes and Mike Long. Thank you.
And would Mr. Chris Karshia, Chairman of the Capitol Planning Committee, introduce the members of his board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tonight, members of the Capitol Planning Committee here are myself, our resigned member, Frank Nash, other members, Joe Gibbons, Jack Whitaker, our newest member, Michael Clark.
I'd ask for a moment of silence in remembrance to remember two of our fallen former public servants. Eugene Litz, who retired from the Situate Fire Department, firefighter, passed on April 8th, 2019. And Ann Hamacher of the Schools and Food Service Department, who passed on April 10th, 2019. Please remember them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. And if you'd also have a thought and a prayer for our people in the service of all types around the world. We've been at war now for 17 years. And there are a lot of people across the globe who need our thoughts and prayers. So please give them. As for our democratic duties, we have a town election this Saturday, May 18th. The voting will be in this room. It'll be from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Remember, 6:00 p.m., not 8:00 p.m. Now, as for this meeting, my name is Richard Bowen, and I am the town moderator. The moderator chairs the meeting and decides questions of order. I don't vote on articles. Let me take a couple of minutes to explain to you how the rules of the meeting work. The town of Situate has two branches of government. The executive branch, represented here by the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee and the various department heads. And the legislative branch, which consists of the Advisory Committee as your standing committee, and you, town meeting. You are each legislators. You are here to debate, deliberate, and vote. This is why we don't operate by ballot question, because you are lawmakers. So here are the rules for making law. The executive branch has made certain requests of this meeting of you, the legislators. And those requests take the form of articles. Tonight, we have only one article. The purpose of this meeting is to allow you to review this one article and to decide whether you think that it's appropriate. You'll hear presentations about the advisability or the inadvisability of what's being asked of you. You may ask questions. You may debate. You may make motions. You may make suggestions. You may do everything that a legislator may do. You have an important friend in your work. That's the Advisory Committee, which is the standing body of you. They sit all year. They meet year-round, review requests, including the one that's before you tonight. The Advisory Committee works very hard, and you have an important friend in the Advisory Committee. They serve as your watchdog. The Capitol Planning Committee likewise reviews items that are of a substantial nature, that involve the expenditure of a lot of money for things that are proposed to last for a long time. They also meet year-round, and they are also your watchdog. Now, like any legislative body, we operate under certain parliamentary rules. The parliamentary rules that we operate under are town meeting time, which is a parliamentary manual devised specially for town meetings, and also the town bylaws. Here is a summary of the rules that we operate under. All non-voters, except for professional consultants advising boards, must sit in the non-voter section, which is right up here. You can see the green delineation. Ordinarily, registered voters may address the meeting, and only registered voters. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow non-voters to speak, provided they are duly recognized and unless a timely objection is raised. Persons wishing to address the meeting must, each time rising to speak, identify themselves in the meeting by name and address. This is a traditional form of courtesy so that you can learn to know your neighbors, and they can learn to know you. It also assists in the record keepers to identify the speakers so that your words may be properly attributed to you. If you are an article sponsor, kindly make a motion before your speech. Otherwise, I'll rule you out of order. Sponsors of resolutions will be allowed... Well, we're not going to have any resolutions, so forget all that. The article sponsor will be allowed... Usually, it's up to 10 minutes. I think I had promised the sponsor in this particular case, because it's a one-artikel meeting, that there would be 15. But 10 is better than 15. So remember, brevity is the soul of wit. And once again, I fail. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has a second. Town meeting members are encouraged to speak from the center microphone. They also line up at the microphones in the wings. I will do my best to recognize you in the order that you arrive at the microphone. If I fail, it's not because I don't like you. It's just because I'm getting old. Sorry. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on an article and three minutes on the second round. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until everyone who has not yet spoken gets their turn to speak, and then you get three more minutes. Speakers, please confine your remarks to the motion that's on the floor. Please address only matters of general interest to the meeting. And kindly don't attack the motives or the personality of any of the other speakers. Recently, we had a somewhat unfortunate example of that. Freedom of speech being what it is, I kind of let it go on. Maybe now I wish I'd been a little quicker with the gavel. So tonight, I'll be quicker with the gavel. So if you think somebody's a jerk, well, just, you know, say it under your breath. "What a jerk. I wish it'd be quiet." And then complain to your wife or your husband about it later. Let's see. You may ask questions of any town official through the moderator. Remember, officials are not obliged to answer your questions. You aren't Perry Mason. This isn't some quiz show where you get to ask 64 questions. If you don't like what anybody says, fine. Don't vote for them. That's your choice. Now, should you tire of debate? There's this wonderful motion. "I move the question." But there's a way to do it. Now, I see this man applauding already. He's going to be the first one at the mic tonight. I know it. If I were there, I'd be the first one at the mic. But there's a way to do it, and there's a way not to do it. If you want to make a motion, move a question. Don't get up and make a speech and then say, "Ha-ha, I've made my speech. Now I move the question." No, 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 no. Just get up, say, "I move the question." Once it's seconded, we'll take a vote. However, there's a little technique called mousetrapping. I don't know why it's called mousetrapping, but that's what it's called. I think at the last meeting, I had a very well-meaning citizen for whom I had a great deal of personal admiration offer a motion right from the start, right after the motion. "I move the question." You know, and if I could have voted for that, I would have. But I don't vote on these things because I have to make rulings. So before I recognize any motion to move the question, we have to have a little bit of debate about it. So those of you who are anxious, you know, let's hear from a few people before you rush up there. And if you're impatient and get up there and make the motion, I'll just rule you out of order. Until we've had a few people who've had the opportunity to speak. Come on, it's a lot of money. It's an important subject. Feelings run high in both directions. Let people have their say. Now, usually, at this point, I tell people about how I'm going to take voice votes. I'm not going to take any voice votes except on procedural motions. When it comes time to vote on the one article that will be on the floor, we're going to go right to the tellers, and you'll be asked to raise your cards. Raise them high. Only one per voter, no two-hand voting, nothing like that. I know who you are. We're just going to go right to that because it's been a hot enough subject that, you know, people would like to see some numbers attached to the vote, not just me saying it's this or that. So we'll have hard numbers for you. I would usually say you get to challenge my determination by a two-thirds vote. Yeah, if it were a voice vote, you get to do that. Since we're going to count it, hey, once it's counted, tough luck. You're going to ask for a... it's counted, tough luck. You're going to ask for a recount, and the rest of us will be out in the parking lot driving away while you count the pieces of paper. At this point, please silence your cell phones. Look, I don't care if you use them. You want to send text messages, watch music videos, you know, do whatever. That's fine. Just spare us Disco's Greatest Hits, or whatever your ringtone is. I guess honorary resolutions, we don't have any, do we? No. Reports, we'll hear those during the speeches. And with all that... No, what's this? Yeah, I already talked about the election. You all know about the election, right? Yeah, it's Saturday, 7 to 6. Okay, so, got to be there. Okay, let's go. Article one, on the motion. Selectman Chairman Dannig.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, if I can indulge your patience just for a few minutes more, Mr. Moderator, our representative Patrick Kearney would like to address you, if that would be okay.
Oh, of course, of course. Now, the representative can hear just as well as I can, so he'll... And he's an intelligent fellow as well, so we're going to let him react.
Smart enough to know that politicians that speak too long get booed off the stage, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to take a long time. But as we all know, it's Richard's last night as the Town Moderator. He's been our Town Moderator for the last fifteen years, and the Massachusetts House of Representatives. I'm here joined by Mike Murphy from Senator Patrick O'Connor's office as well. So, the Massachusetts House of Representatives and the Massachusetts State Senate wanted to present you with a citation that said, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Richard Bowen in recognition of exemplary service and civic engagement for the last fifteen years as a Situate Town Moderator. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for future good fortune and continued success in all of your endeavors. Thank you so much for your service and all you do for the town."
Again, like Representative Kearney said, my name's Michael Murphy. I work for State Senator Pat O'Connor. He couldn't be here tonight, so he got me, and I'm not a politician, so I'll just read this. It's an official State Senate citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Richard Bowen in recognition of his fifteen years of dedicated service to the Situate, as the Situate Town Moderator, and for his outstanding commitment to public service. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, and it's signed by Senate President Karen Spilka, the Clerk of the Senate Michael Hurley, and State Senator Pat O'Connor. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Bowen.
I should have quit years ago. This is great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $12,232,450... I'm sorry. I'll say that again. $12,232,450 to demolish Section C of the Old Gate School. Design, construct, and furnish a new senior center on the property of the Old Gate School, and design, renovate, and furnish the Veterans Memorial Gym. That to meet such appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow up to $12,232,450 under MASH General Laws Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority provided, however, that said appropriation is subject to the affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest in principle on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by MASH General Laws Chapter 59, Section 21(c), or Proposition 2 1/2, so-called, and further that the selectmen are authorized to apply for grants, gifts, and donations for the purposes of this vote from federal, state, or private sources, and the said selectmen are hereby authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town, and that the amount of the authorized borrowing shall be reduced by the amount of grants, gifts, and donations received prior to any such borrowing. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MASH General Laws Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to pay such costs by a like amount."
It's been moved. Is there a second? There is. Moved and seconded discussion, Chairman Dannig.
Thank you. You know, folks, the future depends on what we do in the present. Tonight finds us yet again at another crossroads of this town, and tonight, you all are going to be participating in a very essential role in deciding this moment in time. Six years ago, I had the opportunity to stand before you when we were talking about authorizing and building your library. At that time, I presented, saying that there are a number of capital improvements that the board was looking to do, one of which was the senior center. Five years ago, I was before you again, talking about the middle school, also talking about the Public Safety Building. Now, I'm here, again, honored by my board to speak to you and a privilege to actually present this before you. So, how did we get here? You know, under the charter, the Board of Selectmen are the chief policymaking agency of the town. One of the policies is for the coordination and development of both short-term and long-term planning for the future of the town. We, as a board, in 2011, met Joe Norton, Rick Murray, Tony Vignani, and Sean Harrison and myself, to talk about what are the strategic issues that the town needs to address. We all met at a retreat over at the Maritime Center, and we talked about various things: seawalls, water, but the ones that kept resonating were senior center, public safety building, or fire department, a new one for North Situate, and also the middle school. And as a result of that strategic meeting, we came up with a strategic plan. Now, don't get that mixed up with a master plan. The master plan is with the Town, the Planning Board, and that's what they put forth in 2003. We're in the process of going through a master plan for the town. This was a strategic plan that the board, under those powers, under the charter, to think about trying to move this town in a direction to kind of address issues that, for some reason, never were actually able to get accomplished. So, unfortunately, we've got a really small presentation here. I wish we had a larger screen. Maybe we'll have one next year. But this is your senior center. This is the Catherine A. McGowan Senior Center, and it's existing facility on Brook Street. It's 2,500 square feet, and frankly, it's too small. It doesn't support the programming that our present Council on Aging has, and it needs to increase, given the demographics that are changing. There's not enough parking. There's no confidential areas to speak or privacy for all intents and purposes. You can't use the upstairs, because there's asbestos, and the access upstairs is not accessible. It can't support a lunch program. It can't have more than fifty people in the building, and ultimately, the amenities are just really out of date. We've gotten a lot out of this building. There's no doubt about it. But at this point in time, this picture was taken this morning. That's the back of it. It's time for a change. So, one thing to keep in mind is, this senior center was originally a schoolhouse, built in 1852, for less than $1,000. It's remained a school until 1902, when Jenkins was built. Ultimately, it turned into a hose house for the volunteer fire department to hang their hoses. In 1923, it was actually added on to afford the driver of a pumper truck to live there. Ultimately, in 1938, it turned into the main headquarters and remained the headquarters for your town until 1974, when the actual headquarters on First Parish was actually built. This headquarters actually cost $10,000 in 1938. In 1978, that's what the building looked like. And at that point in time, we were in a process, the town, of trying to decide where we're going to put a senior center. At that point in time, the Central School, or the Central Elementary School, was up for sale by the town. There was a lot of thought and talk about putting a town hall there. In addition, there was a thought and talk about taking Lawson's estate and making that more senior housing. And I mention this because I was talking with Konstantin Konstantides, a gentleman who was on the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Planning Board, as well as your Advisory Board, and he had indicated to me that there was a plan in 1979 to make that area of town a community center, not as a building, but a center of the community, to try to afford both municipality governments, as well as your seniors and a senior center there in the center of town. Unfortunately, it was, or fortunately, it was sold to the Situate Housing Authority, and it became senior housing. Ultimately, a senior center was actually put in 1983 on Brook Street into this structure, as we saw earlier, named after Catherine A. McGowan. In the 90s, the town realized that it was determined that the senior needs were growing and that the facility was grossly undersized. In 2004, proponents of a new senior center came here and actually achieved a $1.9 million override to be able to build a new senior center next to the library. Unfortunately, when they went out to bid, they were under $1 million. They needed actually $2.9 million. So, they tried to get a federal block grant for $1 million, and they were unable to, such that in 2007, the Board of Selectmen, along with the proponents, said, "Let's put a $3.5 million override for a senior center next to the library." Sadly, that override failed. And so, now, we have continued to go on for the past twelve years, trying to put this into a strategic plan of building a new facility. So, how do we get from 2007 to here? Well, after I said we had that strategic meeting and put this into a prioritization of trying to build, in 2014, 2015, the board undertook a needs assessment study to try to figure out what activities and programs and services were needed and desired by the population. In 2015, 2016, we ended up doing a building reuse report for a standalone senior center, is what came out of this. We were looking at possibly putting it into the old high school, the building, but we determined that it was going to be too costly as a town, and we wanted to have a standalone, separate building altogether. In 2017, we underwent a feasibility study. This was a study that went out from January to October. We asked different people what your thoughts were, and we came back with five different locations. And after going through it all, this board decided that we were going to put the senior center on the Gates property, or the high school property for all intents and purposes. 2018, we came to town meeting, and we said, "We're going to possibly tear down the old school, and we're going to put it there on the center location, or somewhere on that parcel." We went through a whole year, going through different committees, talking about just putting it on that site. And as a result, we did, except this time, we were going to tear down the high school. That changed, actually, in February, and I was the one that changed that vote. So, there's been some recent discussion about, well, why not do nothing until we decide what we're going to do with the old school? I'll tell you why. Because you can't hold it hostage, the senior center, to what we're going to do. The plan was to tear it all down. And ultimately, I changed my vote, because you know what? It's $3.5 million to tear it down. I figured, maybe the town can take a look and see if we can do something with it, use it, maybe for a senior center, or not a senior center, a senior housing, a town hall, or some other use, or tear it down. Waiting another year or two to figure that out for a future Board of Selectmen to decide, I think, was well worth the effort. So, ultimately, we decided we're going to put it there on the site, except the question was where on the site. So, after going through it, we decided we're going to put it actually where the Seawing is. I don't know if the pointer works there. But if you can see the Seawing, that's where it's going to go. Now, some people were saying, "Well, geez, are you going to crowd this? This is a historical area, okay?" The high school's not historical. It's an old building, but it's a nice building. But the area is certainly historical. And one thing you have to understand is, the original town hall that was built in 1849 actually is on the location where we're proposing to put your senior center. That was built in 1849, because, guess what? Our original town hall was at Sherman's Corner, and when South Situate ended up going to become Norwell, ultimately, they took the town hall. So, this was built. This building actually continued to stay there, and the high school was built. This was the Little Red Schoolhouse in 1893. After that, you can see, 1916, they started building the actual high school. This is 1970, the exact building that was built. That's your original building right there. And then ultimately, you can see the schoolhouse and the Cudworth and the jelly, I guess, the jelly bean roundabout there. And then ultimately, in 1930, the school continued to expand for the two wings, which brings us to a center. That's what it was all the way up to 1959, and that's what we're proposing to do today. So, what are we proposing? We're looking to build a 15,000-square-foot total building. This is 5,000 square feet more than what was proposed in 2007. It's 2,400 square feet, which happens to be for a multipurpose room. It's about the same size as the Brook Street building. We're also looking at programs, three program rooms, three conference rooms, a wellness center, activity room. There's going to be an area for the veterans' agent, and there's plenty of flexibility for adaptation, as well as expansion on the property. So, what's the cost? Well, I've told you. It's $12 million, 12.2. The original plan that we were going to be putting and tearing down the high school, if we tore it all down, was a $20 million fix. It's going to cost you $20 million. And I switched my vote, because I thought we could save some money, $8 million, because there are other issues in town we have to address. So, one thing I just want to point out is, if you do turn it into a senior housing, that's what happened in Braintree with their old high school, and they have a gymnasium next door. That's just what happened recently in Hanover. They've taken their old high school and turned it into senior housing. So, now, we're at a point where this is the proposed building, and it's an ideal location. You've got all these uses there. You've got recreational use. You've got a walking path. You've got tracks. You've got outdoor facilities with tennis courts and potentially for pickleball. And there's a recreational component also with this building. The recreational component is, and I'm going to get to the numbers shortly, about $1.2 million for the gymnasium. We're fixing and repairing the roof. We're putting an elevator in to make it accessible, and also, we're also doing bathrooms. That's it. So that when you go there, you can get to the second floor for accessibility purposes. Now, I know sometimes people are saying, "Well, geez, can we, can we actually..." We need to do other things first. And I know Bob O'Callaghan put recently on Facebook, he said, "You know, I think the town can actually walk and chew gum at the same time." And what I get out of that is, you know what, to Bob's point, we do. We can't just be focused on one issue at a time. You need to move collectively and walk and chew at the same time. This is absolutely a need the town has been having, not just for the past twelve years, but since 1980. Thirty-nine years. So, the cost. Let me just quickly get to the cost. 8.1 is just for your senior center. The vet component is $200,000. A building generator to make sure that the building that you're building doesn't freeze when some of these storms that we have is $200,000. The gym is a $1.2 million, which I mentioned earlier. The site work, in order to do this, is $1.2 million between the parking and making sure that you have adequate parking, both for the recreation, as well as for the senior center. Demolition and abatement, $300,000. That means the whole Seawing, that flat slab is coming down. And then there's soft costs. Soft costs are about $1 million. That gives you a little delta that we can actually save if it comes in, if it costs some other unforeseen problems. That's what that number is for. Now, the question that a lot of people have is, "What's the impact to me? What's the tax impact?" This is going to be a debt exclusion override. It's premised on a 20-year bond. We're assuming conservatively about 4.5 interest rate. Chances are, it's going to be less than 4.5, but we're being conservative there. Your estimated real estate tax impact on an average home, now, the average home is $576,000. If you're above it, it's going to be more. If you're below this number, it's going to be less. But the average cost for that, for the first year, is $144. Now, unlike your mortgage, where you keep paying the first year, is $144. Now, unlike your mortgage, where you keep paying the same amount, this is just the opposite, because you pay the actual principal every year. And so what happens is, by year 20, a house at $576,000 is only going to be paying $77, so it continues to decrease. It's called declining tax impact. Unfortunately, at this point, we don't have anything to offset this cost. Unlike the library, where we're able to get state funds, unlike the school, we're able to get BA funds, but we are applying for two different grants to see if we can help offset the cost of this building. But be aware, right now, it's 12.2 million. Now, one of the things that's handed out to you in the advisory report, which I think is very important, demonstrates, in essence, the cost to you based upon all our other kind of debt exclusions that we've done recently. And if you take a look at it, if you have it, it's the one that has the chart with the bars. And I think what's important to understand is, is that for fiscal year 18, based on the number, you're looking at, actually, it looks like it's missing, but it should have been $831, okay? Which ultimately, when you look, when this is going to hit the tax wall, if you approve it tonight and gets passed on Saturday, it will go August 1st, 2021. That's for fiscal year '22, 2022. And what that means is, is that when that hits for that, it'll go from, right now, it's declining because some of the debt's coming off, the debts are coming off right now, happens to be our sewer upgrades, will go up to $825. It's still going to be less than it was in FY16, or FY18, at 831. This is important to understand, because we're trying to deal with a lot of deferred maintenance, things that haven't been voted on in the past, that maybe should have, but they didn't. And ultimately, now, we're trying to play catch-up with a lot of infrastructure. And the key in any type of debt exclusion, or way you try to manage this, is try to maintain a level line. You don't want to have a huge spike. And so our goal right now is, this is the right time to be able to pass this. It's the right time to come in. It's not to say there aren't going to be other expenses down the road. There will be. But if we do this right, and as debt begins to fall off, you bring on new debt, and then that falls off, and so on and so forth. So you have a kind of a straight line for all your capital improvements. So, as I said, at this point now, it's going to come down to you, folks. Debate it, discuss it. This is a need. We're not being asked to vote for the unknown tonight, folks, but rather to vote for a senior facility building that reflects you and your community, if not for your use, for your neighbor's use. The ultimate test of a person's conscience may be his or her willingness to sacrifice something today for future generations whose words of thanks will not be heard. I hope, folks, that you will take a look at this long and hard and find out that this is a good project. Not everybody here will agree with it. You'll never be able to get everybody here to agree to a project. But I will say this, it is needed and it's a great project. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Kelly.
John Danahue, thank you very much for the history, explaining the financing, and the Town of Situate really appreciate your service, and we're going to miss you. So this wasn't as easy as it seemed for the Advisory Committee. It should have been really easy, but we reviewed the plans, the financing, and the location for the proposed new senior center, which you'll also see referred to as the community campus. We did extensive research. We were hardly unanimous in our support of this initially. Two of us made site visits to Situate, to Duxbury, and to Marshfield. And any of you who had the time to do it, it's a stark contrast. We deliberated. We studied the demographics from the UMass Donohue Institute. We've got the best town finance director in the Commonwealth in Nancy Holt. And we put Nancy through our paces on explaining to us the debt management and capital needs of the Town of Situate, and how, if we don't reinvest in our town, it's like a corporation that doesn't reinvest in its facilities. You issue bonds to reinvest in your town or your corporation. You pay the debt down on those bonds. You extinguish the debt, and then you have the capacity to be able to issue more. We, by law, the Advisory Committee booklet must be published 15 days before the special town meeting or the annual town meeting, under the Town Bylaws 20140. So as a result of that, we were unable to include the capital planning recommendation in our advisory book because we did not align the meeting dates. And so you'll be hearing from the Capital Planning Committee later on. When you look at the benefits of the proposed senior center, there are many. At $12,232,450, believe it or not, it's a reasonable cost. If we would have done this in 2001, like Duxbury did for a similar size, the cost would have been $1,700,000. And as we go forward, if we do not do this now, the cost is not going to go down. We have a conservative space estimate in the size of the facility and in the parking. If anything, I think it may be too conservative. Duxbury just almost doubled the size of their facility. Marshfield is going to town meeting to increase the size of their facility. For the Situate population, we have 29% of our population that is age 60 or over, and that is projected to increase through 2030 as a percentage. Towns that have a vibrant senior center get between 30% to 40% usage from their seniors at the various centers. To my surprise, in Marshfield, they said about 40% of the seniors that use the facility were men, and 60% were women. And I believe in Duxbury, it was even more than that. This is an opportunity, a transformational opportunity for us. The current facility that Linda Hayes manages is a building code violation. It's not a senior center. We want a center that's transformative in both programming and activities, like Cohasset, Marshfield, Rockland, Duxbury, and even Greenfield, Massachusetts. Services that are offered at these other senior centers include exercise, learning, social interaction, health and wellness, and daily lunch. With the facility the way it is proposed, there will be an opportunity to schedule multiple programs simultaneously. You can't do that now. There will be respectful spaces for privacy, counseling, for both seniors and for veterans. The varied programming possibilities are only limited by your imagination. We could have semester-long courses taught by some of you, because you've got abundant lifetime experiences. Think of the senior center as something beyond Scrabble and Mahjong. There are potential revenue opportunities. The proposed café is a revenue generator. In Duxbury, the café generates $20,000 a year. If we choose, we can rent out the space for functions. Now, the downside of that is, you're going to have increased wear and tear, increased maintenance, increased depreciation. Marshfield has elected not to do that. Duxbury does it. Selfishly, there'll be more rooms for town committee meetings also. We're certainly stretched thin there. And the senior center will operate during the day, and the town can use the various rooms for meetings at night. This is an attractive building, keeping with the architecture of Situate. Its central location is both a positive and negative. Many people feel that it's too close to the Gate School, the legacy Gate School, not the New Gate School, with apologies. If we decide that we are going to take the legacy Gate School down, does the placing of the senior center here impact that decision for the use of the properties? The town considered four locations: the Purple Dinosaur, the Situate Housing Lot on the corner of Driftway and Driftway, you know, only Situate has two streets named Driftway, the library, and the Gate School. With the traffic patterns, it's not ideal. However, it is part of a community campus that includes senior housing, the recreation center, and the library. John has already talked about the impact on the average tax bill. It's about $2,230 over 20 years on the average home, knowing that that's going to be a decreasing amount, starting higher and then going lower. Please, folks, view this as a multi-generational space. There's an opportunity for us to use it for our seniors, for families, for caregivers, and for student volunteers. It's a shared resource for the Town of Situate. The generator will allow us to use this as a warming center when we have flooding and electrical outages. It's a meeting space, and it can be used for community events. This was not an easy decision for us as the Advisory Committee. I personally think that the time is far past due. The Advisory Committee voted six to one in favor of supporting this article. Thank you.
From the Capital Planning Committee, Chairman Chris Karsha.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital Planning Committee met at least four times to review this article. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of debate. After a thorough discussion of all the merits and detractors, and we reviewed them all, the vote was three for, three against, one recusal. The article did not pass and is not supported as a fiscally responsible project from a capital standing viewpoint. Thank you.
Will the Council on Aging be speaking now or during the presentation? From the Council on Aging, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you all for your attention and attendance here tonight. I'm J.D. Miller. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Situate Council on Aging. My hope for tonight's discussion, my hope for tonight's discussion and dialogue is to provide information on this article, which I believe is very important to the Town of Situate and for all those who call this our home. The community campus project will touch almost all of you. The Rec Department, which is extremely busy with programs for young and slightly older alike, is to receive an upgrade to their home base, the Veterans Memorial Gym. It'll be brought up to code for public access via a new elevator and entrance, making a very busy building more accessible to all residents, young and old. A new senior center is proposed on the eastern portion of what I will refer to as the old Gates Campus. Currently, our maturing population is underserviced in a very old and very small building. As has been noted, fully 30% of Situate's population is 60-plus years of age, and both those sets of numbers, those aging and as a percentage of total town population, are increasing. The current senior center is woefully inadequate for our current constituents. There's a lack of space for programming, privacy, parking. As noted, many town residents travel out of town to avail themselves of facilities in our neighboring towns. And yet, the usage and participation of towns' seniors grows. Month over month, year over year, the usage statistics from our current center show double-digit increases. This project has been vetted, examined, analyzed, and studied for five to 15 years, if not longer. Feasibility studies, usage of old town buildings, and resources, surveys, you name it. It has been a very deductive process. There have been agreements and disagreements. And finally, agreements leading to consensus. All town stakeholders have been consulted and weighed in. The Historic Commission, the Recreation Department, Traffic Review, Public Building Commission, Board of Selectmen, Capital Advisory, Disability Commission, Capital Planning, and others have had input on this project. We have listened and positively adjusted plans and scope. We've also been very mindful of, and I believe succeeded, in presenting a tight, realistic, and efficient expense budget for project development. We pledge to continue to look into any and all available resources of financing, everything from individual donations to possible grant opportunities, to any available assistance from the Commonwealth. The community campus project strengthens our town. It puts a new shine on our core town center, synergistically uniting our active senior community with adjacent resources, including the library, historic town landmarks, housing, and athletics. I trust you will vote to support Situate, our town, our community, and residents of all age groups with a yes vote on this article before you tonight. Thank you.
All right. Now, this is where I earn the big bucks, regulating the debate. What'll happen is, if you want debate, we'll have it, and then we'll proceed to a vote. So, discussion from the floor. Lady at the center mic.
Susannah Green, 337 First Parish Road. First and foremost, I want to state that our family is in full support of a better senior center. We have the utmost respect for everyone who's been involved to make this a reality. As a media... for everyone who's been involved to make this a reality. As abutters to the former Gates School, we have had a vested interest to follow all the activity over the years for the reuse of this property. However, our validity as abutters with rights or objections was questioned recently by someone asking us how long we had lived at our property. To answer that question, this Situate founder family has lived in this particular home for 120 years, and my son is the fifth generation growing up in the home. Back in 2017, when we learned of the decision to place the senior center at the former Gates' location, we had concerns as one design located the building next to our home. We were told that this option would never happen. At last year's Springtown meeting, the vote was made to tear down the former Gates' building and connect a new standalone senior center to the existing gym. Our concern regarding the potential of a building being in close proximity to our home was now gone. Once the design was in progress, all of the abutters met to discuss our concerns after first seeing the site plan proposal at a presentation. We arranged to have a meeting in November with the architect. A revised plan was done and seen by the abutters in December. This revision had our full approval, and we assumed everything was final. Then in January of 2019, the demolition plan was halted due to cost and public demand to keep the historic building. The result of this was to now put the senior center elsewhere on the property. We were unable to attend that one critical meeting, which was a pivotal turning point for the project. We did not discover that anything this drastic had happened until the middle of February. The abutters were never once personally notified that any of these changes were happening by anyone involved in the project. We immediately requested updated site plans and were shocked to discover that the senior center was now located in the corner of the property near our home. The location that we had been told before would never happen. We put in multiple requests to meet with the architect to go over the new site plan revisions. The architect did the best that he could for us, but this three-month-old plan still has major concerns and issues. We have had many months of stress, anxiety, and sleepless nights over this current proposal. This plan introduces a myriad of problems: dangerous traffic entry location on a blind spot of First Parish at a conjunction of multiple existing driveways; proposal for a crosswalk at this same location; inadequate parking for the senior center and recreation; lack of pedestrian cross connectivity to the field and Cudworth-First Parish Beaver Dam; lack of full emergency access; restricted future use for the former Gates School due to no comprehensive master plan for the site. We have also had personal concerns over this plan, as it is very intrusive to the neighborhood, plus the town has had a history of ignoring abutter rights for past generations of our family. I strongly urge you to put this plan on hold and give it time to be properly vetted. If the standalone senior center is a must on this location, please consider the plan to put it in the back, keeping the track and field, and adding adequate parking, which would allow the potential for future renovation of former gates without the current design constraints. Otherwise, please build this in a different location that was preferred by the seniors. The elephant in the room is the fact that we will still have a $30 million building project to deal with. Ideally, we should spend more money and fully renovate former gates as a true multipurpose community center. As Irish as this town may be, we don't have a pot of gold. We need to plan well and spend our money wisely. I ask that you carefully consider your decisions this
I think I owe Ms. Green an apology. About 50 years ago, Tim Hox and Andy Connors and I were smoking cigarettes in your driveway when we were at the school, so I'm sorry. Lady at the center mic.
Sure. Hi, I'm Dr. Caitlin Coyle, and I live at 2 Blueberry Lane. I'm relatively new to Situate. I'm a new mom, and I'm also a gerontologist by training. I have dedicated my life's work to bettering the lives of older people through research, scholarship, and community service. I work every day on issues that face older residents of Massachusetts, like economic insecurity, social isolation, and the onset of disability. So first, I'd like to talk with you as a doctor of gerontology. It is true that a large number of people are reaching age 65, and it's also true that they're living longer. They want to age in their communities and in their homes. This will create a demand for aging services. This is a reality that's facing every single town in the Commonwealth. I'm asked all the time, what does it take for a community to be a good place to grow old? The answer is pretty simple. It's the same kind of things that make it a good place to grow up: respect, opportunities to be socially and civically engaged, access to food and health services, housing, and transportation. The senior center is the cornerstone of all of these things for older residents. It is more than a bingo game or a free lunch. It is access to needed services and serves the crucial function of a place to gather, to belong, and to contribute. Investing in a senior center is an investment in the future of our community. You see, ageism is a two-way street. As a person under the age of 40 who's an expert in aging, I get it all the time. The senior center project will provide opportunities for our current seniors to remain engaged socially and civically, but it also gives our kids positive images of aging. It will allow for all kinds of opportunities for us to gather across generations, and putting the senior center in the center of town will send the message to our young people that aging is an accomplishment, an achievement, and older residents have much to offer. Now, I briefly want to talk to you as a resident and a member of the COA board. This project is the result of working together across boards and commissions to devise a project that responds not only to the needs of our seniors today, but for the residents who plan to become seniors in Situate. It is the product of municipal government working. It means a step in the right direction and an investment in a piece of property that has a lot of potential and will be addressed in the forthcoming master plan. We would be kicking the can down the road by not acting tonight. I also want to say to any young families who are watching this at home or reading about it in the paper tomorrow, I hear you. It is hard to be an active member of the community, work full-time, and be a parent. But if we all do our little bit, we can accomplish big things. So please be sure to vote on Saturday. The friendliness and the closeness of this town is part of what drew my family here, and I want to make sure that my infant daughter gets to experience that community. I want her to grow up in a generation that respects, honors, and admires older adults, and in a community where a newcomer like me can get involved working alongside residents who have been here for decades, because we share a common goal of keeping Situate a great place to live. Please vote to support the senior center. Thanks.
Hello, Emily Folly, Lawson Road.
Gentlemen to my left.
Jack Whalen, Oakhurst Road. When I went to get a sign to put on my lawn, and I was introduced by Linda Hayes to Dr. Price. And Dr. Price said, "You ought to go see the Marshfield Senior Center," which I did. And it's a wonderful place, and it does support the idea that if you build it, they will come. It's just an excellent place. He also said as an aside, "I hope to see our senior center built." And that's a message for myself as well, and particularly for the older seniors, okay? We would like to see it built, not put on hold. And at the special meeting we had the other night, as Mr. Denny, he said, and he's been great, has had the whole Board of Selectment and Mr. Boudreau, this is the time to build it. There are other issues: brown water, seawall, potential new elementary school down the road. I just believe this is the time, and I hope you support this.
Lady at the center.
Thank you. Emily Folly, Lawson Road. I actually have a question, not a statement, about the plans that are being presented. Has there been consideration or any movement on solar roofing for the new roof on the gym and on the senior center? I feel like it would be a good idea in terms of alleviating electric costs and perhaps adding some other revenue to the project.
To answer the question solely as to whether there's been consideration of solar roofing on the proposed facility and on the gym. Chairman Denny.
That's a good observation. Right now, no, okay? But I think, you know, the gymnasium would be a good location for it because it's flat, and right, that's something that we can certainly take a look at. But it's only just a repair of the roof right now. But ultimately, I think certainly that structure would lend itself. As far as the senior center or Heritage Center, no, that's not a consideration.
May I add my support of those two ideas? And you don't need a flat roof for a solar. You just need a roof for a solar, particularly when a new roof is going on. It's the most easiest to add. So, thank you.
I don't think we'd have had much sunshine to generate anything lately, but... Lady to my right.
Yes, Dr. Millsday. I live on 755 First Parish Road. I'm a nurse practitioner. I work at the VA, and I've spent many years working with the elder population. I also do palliative care and hospice care, so I'm quite familiar with a lot of issues in gerontology. I agree with Caitlin and the committee, the Council for Aging. It's very important for the seniors to have a place where they can congregate and where they can be and get services, so I support the motion.
Gentlemen to the center mic.
Thank you. I thought you were going there first. Gordon Price, 48 Mannlot Road. First of all, I want to compliment Mr. Bowen on his 15 years of service to the town. I had a new pair of reading glasses I was going to present to you, but I forgot them at home.
Gordon, I bought these from you.
Thank you. I'd also like to... We're here today through the efforts of a lot of people. I'd like to thank the town administrator, Jim Boudreau, who has helped tremendously with the project. Board of Selectmen have all been extremely supportive. They unanimously support the project. Nancy Holt, who is just a wizard with numbers, and she's shown me, and I've sat through three of her presentations. This is the right financial time to do this. Lincoln Heineman sent Jerry and Elise out on a mission to do some research on senior center. So they really did their homework, as Jerry said. Steve Shea on the Public Building Commission spent hours and hours on this project with a great recommendation as well. And Chris Karsha, good meeting at Chris Karsha's. I think a 3-3 tie is kind of a wash, but it does go down as a no vote, so that's okay. We're willing to accept that. John took a lot of my thunder away. Wish I should have met with him before we opened the meeting here, but let me just highlight a couple of things. You know, the why now? You know, there was a 2014 Facilities Master Plan, not a Town Master Plan, and of the four items that were recommended for construction, this is the only one that has not come to be yet. Granted, yes, it was talked about being joined with a... And the word "complex" has been used for quite a while. You know, someone said, "Why are you coming up with this marketing gimmick with complex in campus?" And in 2014 Master Plan, it actually talked about a Gates complex. But anyway, as that complex was looked at, it soon became evident that, number one, it did not meet the physical requirements to have a 2019 to 2020 senior facility built in that complex. It would have had to been gutted to the walls, and the cost of that in today's dollars probably would be around $30 or $35 million. And that's one of the reasons why we didn't follow through on that program. The next program, as John mentioned, was to look at a taking down of the Gates' property, and we really acquiesced to the wishes of some people in town. We thought of it being historic, and we also wanted to come back to the town with what we thought was a reasonable, fiscally sound project, and that was the result of the current plan that we have now at $12.2 million. So there is a plan. The plan is, this is phase one, and the plan is that we will go forward after Saturday's vote, and the Board of Selectmen will decide on putting together probably a committee, and we'll look at the potential future use of gates. So there is a plan. We don't have a specific use right now for gates. Neither does the opposition. So there is no specific plan on either side. We have compromised a lot. We've come down from, you know, a $20 million project to a $12.2 million project. If you go by the state guidelines for senior centers, they recommend 4.5 feet per senior. We have almost 6,000 seniors, 60 and over. You multiply that times 4.5, it's 27,000 square foot center. We didn't feel that that was appropriate to bring that forward to the town meeting at this point, so we compromised on that as well. There have been numbers of compromises over the course of the planning in the last four months. The building has, we've also made what we thought were legitimate compromises with the abutters. The building has been moved to be about 134 feet away from their building. There will be a significant buffer of, I believe it's in the area of 20 feet at this point, a buffer between the parking lot and their building to provide them some increased privacy. Lighting will be developed accordingly so that there's not a lot of light scatter. So we've done really a lot to make this the best possible plan out there. I want to talk a little about the multi-generational aspect. You know, that has been kind of thrown in our face that, you know, you're building a... You talk about, you've got people confused. They think that you're building a community center. We are not building a community center. We're building a senior center that will make every effort and a sincere, concerted effort to have multi-generational programming associated in that building. I've personally visited two PTOs in town. I have on my schedule to visit the other two, and the reaction that I've gotten from the PTOs was overwhelming support as soon as they understand that this is a community, this is a senior center of 2019. This is not a senior center of, you know, 1965, where I think somebody mentioned Bingo and Mahjong. That does not happen in a real active viable center that Jerry and Elise visited in Marshfield and Duxbury. So multi-generational program is something that is going to be a priority for us. Community pride. I researched the definition of community, and it is, "The function of a community is to maintain a way of life or a culture," and that results in pride in a community. I hope there's no one in this room tonight who has visited the library since its expansion and doesn't take a lot of pride in that building. And there are people here I know tonight, Les Ball, I think Jenny Ayers, you know, John Kalopolis, they worked their butt off on that project. And that's the kind of pride that I think we will have in this facility when we break ground in October. Pride in our senior population and for the way in which we have supported this town for generations. Pride in assisting our senior population to continue to age with education, grace, physical, emotional health, and to be an active participant in our community. And this facility will provide that. I'd just like to close with one last thought, and I mentioned this at the Citizen of the Year party a week and a half ago. Some of you were there, and I'd just like you to maybe take this to heart, because I do myself. It is not that we expect to live forever, but to leave something behind that will. This is a facility that will do- This is a facility that will do that. Vote for this article.
My name is Les Ball. I live at 40 Driftway, and how can I follow that? First of all, six years ago, in this very same room, I presented the proposal for the library. At the conclusion of my presentation, a man stood up, and he said, "The seniors of this community wholeheartedly support the library project." And they did. They voted for the project here. They came out to vote. They stood and held signs for us. They called their friends. They emailed their friends, and they even gave us a considerable amount of money. We thanked them for that, and we said to them, "We will support you when your time has come." Their time has now come. The Citra Library Foundation and all of its members wholeheartedly support this project, and we ask for a positive vote.
Gentlemen to my right.
Niko Ofanosenko, 303 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. I move the question.
Motion to move the question is a motion to terminate debate. It requires a two-thirds vote. We can do that on our voice vote. All those in favor of terminating debate signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
Unanimous, except for three. War is over. You can come in from the island. Sorry, bad joke. All right, will the tellers kindly take their places? What does the voting card look like, Kathy? What's the voting card today? What's the color of the day?
Pink.
Pink, okay. So, all those who vote to wish da, I mean, I mean, yes, hold up your pink voting card now. All those in favor, raise your pink voting card. Tom Gavin. These folks want their votes counted. No, thank you. Thank you, Tom. Right rear bleacher.
104.
Hey, Tom, did you miss one? All right, thank you. What was that number, Chris?
104.
104. Right front bleacher. That's you, Tom.
67.
67, thank you. Right rear floor. 55, thank you, Deb. Right center floor.
57, 57.
Thank you. Right front floor includes advisory committee and school committee. Thank you, Penny. Left rear bleacher.
114.
114. Left front bleacher.
34.
34. Left rear floor.
60.
60, thank you. Left center floor.
48, 48.
48. Left front floor includes moderator, clerk, selectman, and registrars.
24.
24, okay, thank you. All those opposed, kindly raise your voting cards. Right rear bleacher. Right front bleacher. Right rear floor. 1. Right center floor.
3.
3. Right front floor including advisory committee and school committee. Left rear bleacher.
20, 20.
Folks, could you come to order? If you're going to vote for your feet, at least do it with your feet. At least do it quietly, okay? Left front bleacher.
8.
8. Left rear floor.
4.
4. Left center floor.
13, 13.
13. Left front floor includes moderator, clerk, selectman, and registrars.
4.
By a vote of 592 votes in the affirmative and 90 in the negative, the motion carries. What, a motion to reconsider? What was that? Oh, no, a motion to adjourn. It's been moved, seconded, discussion there being done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Good night.